There we go. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Councilmember Ball.
President.
Councilmember Peacock.
Here.
Councilmember Montoya.
Here.
Councilmember Grant.
Here.
Councilmember Nash.
Here.
Councilmember Hinkle.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Dixon.
Here.
Mayor Heikla.
I am here. Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on the agenda is a resolution of the council in conjunction with the Norman Animal Welfare Oversight Committee, awarding the two thousand and twenty-five Norman Animal Welfare Voluntarism Award. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to recognize Ms. Rebecca Bean. Is she here?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Okay. Would you make that award, please?
I'm going to make everyone. It is my honor to tell you- A little bit about Deb Melzner. Many of you know her as an exemplary person in our community who helps both people and animals. She unanimously received our Volunteer of the Year Award with the Norman Animal Welfare Oversight Committee. And in thinking about some story that could encapsulate Deb's amazing commitment to our town, I think back to a post that was made on social media recently about her. And someone in the comments said, "I can see you being late to your own award ceremony because you were out scanning a stray dog for a microchip." And that is Deb. Her commitment knows no bounds. By day, Deb works as a nurse. She cares for human patients with great compassion and skill. And outside of her professional hours, she's equally dedicated to the people and animals in our community. She's not only a foster for homeless pets, but also serves on the Board of Earth Mother Rescue, where she helps shape the work of rehabilitating animals in need and saving them and ultimately getting them into forever homes. In addition, Deb does one of the most challenging things in our community, and that is maintaining one of Norman's primary Facebook groups for lost and found animals. She provides a vital connection point for people who have lost or found a pet to come together and keep that pet out of our shelter, which is so impactful. She spends countless hours in the field rescuing hard-to-catch dogs like the Interstate Princess, who was running around on I-35 for six, nine months. This dog could not be caught without the help of people like Deb, who spent countless hours in their own funds building a straw fort with specialized equipment and delectable treats because this particular dog was a princess. And her patience brought that dog into safety, along with the work of our animal welfare officers. Her patience and persistence have given dozens, if not hundreds, of frightened animals a second chance of loving homes in our community. Perhaps most remarkably, Deb also performs the difficult task of scanning deceased pets for microchips, helping to provide closure to families facing the worst-case scenario. It's an act of kindness that few would have the strength to carry out. Deb embodies the spirit of volunteerism, filling a critical gap left by tightening budgets and showing that compassion and community action can still change lives, both human and animals. Please join me in acknowledging Deb Melzner as our Animal Welfare Volunteer of the Year.
Did you want to say anything?
Oh, gosh. Just, I mean, I just thank you to all of these people and thank you. I'm not good at being up in front of people, but I guess that's why I work with animals. But I just, I'm very, very humbled by this. And I just, thank you.
Item number two, a proclamation proclaiming Saturday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Kids to Parks Days in the city of Norman. I would entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion. And second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been- To acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Saturday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Kids to Parks Days in the city of Norman. Whereas May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, is the Kids to Parks Days organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit the city of Norman's parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, hypercholesterolemia. And whereas Kids to Parks Days will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. And whereas Kids to Parks Days will recognize the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. And whereas the city of Norman invites the public to celebrate Kids to Parks Day with a special event on Saturday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, from ten o'clock in the morning until twelve noon at Bentley Park. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Kids to Parks Days in the city of Norman. I'd like to recognize Siobhan Niama and Nico Evans to accept the proclamation. And Jason, please.
So quicker, I guess we can take a picture, but on your way down, I can go through my little spiel. But Kids to Park Day, make sure everybody comes out. It's Bentley Park this Saturday, ten to twelve. We'll have snow cones, Nerf battles, inflatables, story time with the library, and music. It's a good time for all, not only for kids, but we want those parents that are attached to those kids to show up to the park. And it's at our newest neighborhood park, Bentley Park, at Summit Valley, which I should remember because it's Ocksmorin, on the southeast part of town. So come by and hang out with us on Saturday.
Thank you.
I have a lot of memories at different parks in Normans with my friends and family. And I like to walk down to my neighborhood park with my family and climb on the playground in the balance beam, holding up the wood chips. And I think everyone should go to Norman Parks because they are really fun.
Jump into the picture. Come on. Item number three. Excuse me. A proclamation proclaiming the month of May, two thousand and twenty-five, as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion. And second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of May, two thousand and twenty-five, as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Norman. Whereas since nineteen forty-nine, mental health America and its affiliates have led the observance of May as Mental Health Month to raise, excuse me, to raise awareness and educate communities, eliminate stigma, and encourage treatment. And whereas mental illnesses affect millions of Americans and does not discriminate among genders, races, ethnicities, and socio-economic statuses. And whereas mental health two thousand and twenty-five theme is turn awareness into action, emphasizes the importance of not only raising awareness about mental health, but also taking concrete steps to improve well-being. And whereas in one in five U.S. adults experience mental illness every year. One in twenty U.S. adults experience serious mental illness each year. One in six U.S. youth aged six through seventeen experience a mental health disorder each year. And fifty percent of all lifetime mental illnesses begin by age fourteen and seventy-five percent by age twenty-four. And whereas checking in on our mental health is especially important during stressful times and is crucial that we support one another and stay focused on what we each need, both personally and as a community, to stay well and move forward together. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand and twenty-five, as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Norman and encourage all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit to our community in increasing awareness and understanding of mental health and to work together to support one another so that we may continue to thrive individually and as a community. I'd like to recognize Brianna Norman, Executive Director, Central Oklahoma Community Mental Health Center, to accept the proclamation. Please.
Thank you guys so much. On behalf of the providers in Norman, I want to thank the city for this proclamation and the recognition of May as Mental Health Awareness Month. If you don't know, over at the Community Mental Health Center, we'll see close to eight thousand citizens throughout the year to make sure that mental health needs are treated and will respond to approximately one thousand consumers in a crisis face-to-face, wherever they are. And so thank you so much for this proclamation.
Item number four, a proclamation proclaiming the week of May eighteenth through twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, as Public Works Week in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion. And second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Saturday, May seventeenth. No. It says Kids to Parks Days. I like Kids to Park Day. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the week of May eighteenth through twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, as Public Works Week in the city of Norman. They work outside, too. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vitally important and sustainable and resilient communities to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people in Norman, Oklahoma. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities, essential for our citizens. And where it is in the public interest for the citizens and children in the city of Norman to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the city of Norman Public Works Department will celebrate by recognizing employees for their outstanding support of the goals of Public Works on May twenty-second, educating local schoolchildren in the aspects of Public Works operations. And on May twenty-first, and engaging the community with a Public Works art contest. And whereas the year two thousand and twenty-five marks the sixty-fifth Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth through twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, as National Public Works Week. And I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies, designed to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions that they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. I don't know who's accepting this award. Is it you, Scott?
It's me.
Scott recognizes Scott Sturts, Director of Public Works, and Amy Shepherd, Management Analyst, to receive the proclamation.
Just something short. Good evening, this seems City Council and Mayor. I'm excited to be here with you tonight to accept the proclamation for Public Works Weeks in the city of Norman. Over the last decade of my life, I have worked side-by-side with the members of the Public Works Department, and I've never before worked with people as committed and dedicated as the people in our team. The mission of the Public Works is to provide services to our community so seamless that none of you have to even notice. The American Public Works Association's theme this year is People, Purpose, and Presence. This resonates with all of our department because it focuses on the ideas that motivate our staff. Serving people always gives us purpose. And even when we don't get a chance to meet people face-to-face, we're always working, present, behind the scenes, to advance the quality of life for our community. Thank you all again for this proclamation. Y'all have a wonderful evening.
Item five, a proclamation proclaiming May, two thousand and twenty-five, as Small Business Month in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion. And second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read. The proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming May, two thousand and twenty-five, as Small Business Month in the city of Norman. Whereas small businesses are the backbone of our economy and vital to Norman's unique character, driving innovation and creating jobs. And whereas supporting small businesses strengthens our community and preserves its vibrant culture. And whereas the city of Norman recognizes the crucial role of entrepreneurs and joins the national effort to support their growth and success. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand and twenty-five, as Small Business Month in the city of Norman and encourage all Norman citizens to support small businesses in Norman throughout the year. I'd like to recognize Jonathan Stapleton, Four O Five Brewing.
We also have Trey Carson here as well. On behalf of the small businesses of Norman, I'd like to thank the city and the city council for proclaiming May as Small Business Month. Additionally, this week is American Craft Beer Week, so I'd encourage all of you, all of you, to visit a locally-owned craft brewery. Thank you to the city, thank you to the council, and I think most importantly, thank you to the citizens of Norman for supporting locally-owned small businesses.
A proclamation proclaiming the month of May, two thousand and twenty-five, as Bike Month, and Friday, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, is Bike to Work Day in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Motion.
And second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
And I'm going to pass this off to Councilmember Hinkle because my voice is going.
A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of May, two thousand and twenty-five, as Bike Month, and Friday, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Bike to Work Day in the city of Norman. Whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling because it is a viable and environmentally friendly form of transportation and excellent form of fitness, provides quality recreation, and helps relieve the fiscal strain of high gas prices. And whereas the education of cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users. And whereas the city of Norman continues to update its bicycle plan and bicycle transportation network, including the continued design and construction of a multimodal off-street bike path along State Highway Nine, the construction of a multimodal path along Flood Avenue from Robinson Street to Tecumseh Road, and continuing to add bike lanes and widen shoulders like those just added to East Alameda Street from Porter Avenue to Thirty-Sixth Avenue Northeast. And whereas the city of Norman has been designated by the League of American Bicyclists as an official bicycle-friendly community for almost twelve years. And whereas the Norman Bicycle Advisory Committee, the Bicycle League of Norman, and independent cyclists throughout our state are promoting greater public awareness, bicycle operation, and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities for all. Now therefore, I, Joshua Hinkle, Councilmember for Norman Ward Six, in proxy for the mayor of the city of Norman of Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand and twenty-five, as Bike Month, and also proclaim Friday, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Bike to Work Day in the city of Norman, and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of bicycle safety, be more aware of cyclists on our streets and highways, and invite all to ride their bicycles to Andrews Park that morning as they bike to work for an eight-thirty a.m. rally as a show of support for bicycle use for all those reasons named herein.
Yeah, go ahead. I'd like to recognize Mr. Hal Cantwell, Chair of the Bicycle Advisory Center. What I'm trying to say. Bicycle Advisory Committee?
And I'll jump in and save some time. I just want to thank the mayor, Mr. Hinkle, and all the council, and all the citizens of Norman for the support over the years for bicycling and all the infrastructure that has come out of that. And do come out Friday. The weather looks good this year, so.
All right. Number seven, a proclamation proclaiming Friday, May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, is Poppy Day in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion. And second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Friday, May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty- in the city of Norman. Whereas America is a land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers. And whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle. And whereas a nation of peace must be reminded the price of war and the debt that's owed to those who have died in war. And whereas the Red Poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars. And whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged- has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Friday, May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, as Poppy Day, and ask that all the citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on this day. I'd like to recognize Eileen Grubbs, American Legion Auxiliary.
Thank you, City Council and the Mayor. The American Legion Auxiliary observes National Poppy Day, which is traditionally the Friday before Memorial Day. The day encourages Americans to wear red poppy as a symbol of reverence for those who have served and died in service of the country. We'll be out in Norman somewhere with poppies to give people to wear, and we will be, the American Legion and Auxiliary will be at Warren Cemetery on the Sunday before Memorial Day, and at I double O F on Monday, on Memorial Day. Thank you.
And one personal note to add to that. We've had eighty years of peace since our last world war. Let's keep it that way. Next item on the agenda is council announcements, and I'll start at Ward eight.
No announcements for Ward eight this week.
Councilmember?
Just a couple. Just wanted to take a minute and recognize and thank city staff and everybody else that worked on the new program, A Better Way, Opportunity Knox, which we did the ribbon cutting and unveiling for this past week. And there may be other comments about it too, but using a van that the city purchased and partnering with an agency to operate a program that helps provide job opportunities for residents in Norman that are facing difficulties with housing, or employment, or other things, helping going around the city, picking up litter, getting paid a day's wage, getting connected with services. And so really, an all-around, I think, win for everybody in our community, paid for partly with federal money, partly with opioid settlement funds. So it's a program that the council, we've all been working on together for a couple of years, and it's really exciting to see that roll out finally in our community. So just wanted to show some recognition for that, and I look forward to seeing the van out on the streets soon. And then also wanted to encourage everybody to attend the Moore Lindsey House fiftieth anniversary this weekend. The Moore Lindsey House is one of, if not maybe the oldest house in Norman, and has a lot of artifacts of Norman and Cleveland County history, but a lot of real interesting stuff about Norman that you can check out there. So that's their fiftieth anniversary as a museum. And then also the May Fair this Saturday and Sunday on Campus Corner. I would definitely encourage everybody to get out and check that out. Buchanan Street is closed off usually, and there's lots of great booths and artists set up, and anytime we have an opportunity to close the street off and have a festival is a good opportunity to me. So we just encourage everybody to go check that out. Thanks.
Councilmember?
Yes, just spring in Norman is a great time to get out and do things, so lots of festivals and fairs and all sorts of things happening, so I really encourage everybody to get out and try those. If you're bored in Norman in the springtime, then you're really just not looking hard enough to find something to do. So those are all my announcements. Thank you.
Councilmember?
No announcements this week. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Ward four in City of Norman. It's been a while since we were last up here. I had a great Norman Music Fest weekend, despite what some local columnists might think of the event. I finally get to say I earned more working one weekend on the doors at a local venue than I did an entire month of serving on City Council. Earth Day was also an amazing event that drew crowds hot on the heels of Music Fest. Speaking of hot heels, I also had the privilege of judging the Norman Pride Parade. Shout out to Thunderbird Clubhouse for winning Most Energetic. And I had an art show opening on Second Friday Art Walk. You can visit uncannyarthouse.com to learn more about our Queer Joy Exuberant Exhibition and upcoming events this month related to it. Councilmember Holman already hit on the Moore Lindsey House, but I'll tell you where it is and when. It's on May seventeenth, one to four p.m., located at five zero eight North Peters Avenue. Admission is free. Visit normanhistorymuseum.org/50thinvitation for more information. And last, I'd like to thank the following Ward four constituents for serving on the following boards. On Board of Adjustment, we have Eric Williams, Historic District Commission, Evan Taylor, and Sue Ringus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Ward three in Norman, Oklahoma. I hope everyone here is doing well. I just wanted to reach out and just say thank you to Deborah Engel, to be appointed to the Library Board, David Nemo, and Andy Scherer for being appointed to the Norman Regional Hospital Authority. So thank you all for serving your community.
No announcements for Ward two. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Norman. In a happy craft beer week, I guess. Still here, after paying my fifty-dollar fine for a few more meetings anyway. I know that doesn't make everybody happy, but since those same people would probably give me a medal if I was a human trafficker from El Salvador, you know, it is what it is. But yeah, what a great time to be an American here in Oklahoma. Got all kinds of amazing things going on. Oklahoma Thunder, Oklahoma City Thunder, OU softball, they're both fighting for national championships, which is amazing. Our Oklahoma's Prospects, which is a group of boys, which is a boys' baseball team here in Norman, fourteen and up. They are triple A. They just went to Springdale, Arkansas, and out of sixty teams, they were the champions and took first place. So I believe that gets them an automatic bid into the Little League World Series. So great job, fellas. All kinds of amazing things going on. I want to give a big shout out to our Parks and Rec Department. Our splash pads are all about to open up. Westwood Pool's getting ready to go, so if you're a veteran like myself, you can get a discounted rate on your summer pool pass. I think it's about a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-five dollars for a family of four. It's two hundred and twenty dollars if you're not a veteran, which is still an amazing deal for our water complex facility over there. And like Councilman Holman said, May Fair's going on this weekend. It's a busy time. We had all kinds of graduations going on this last weekend. OU graduated. Our seniors here at Norman and Norman North Hall graduated, so congratulations to all of them. Hopefully, we keep Norman a place where you want to live and raise a family. So that's all I got.
Item is placed on the agenda so the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that items eight through item twenty-nine be placed on the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion to place items eight through twenty-nine on the consent docket.
Motion.
Second.
A motion, second. Motion on the floor is to place items eight through twenty-nine on the consent docket. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been placed items eight through twenty-nine on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, and second. Any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Yes, sir.
Just item number twenty-seven, real quick, for Public Works, about Post Oak Road, if anybody has info about that. Just this, the way I understand this project, it's mostly, or part of it's in Ward seven anyway, from Highway seventy-seven west until it dead ends, which is a couple houses back there. But since it's a split project, I just was curious, for the record, how is it one contractor does the work, and Norman and Noble pay for it? And also, since it is a section line road, why is there not a county contribution to it?
Okay, thank you. Scott Sturz, Director of Public Works. This is a great project. It's one of the first times, or we've done a couple other small projects where we are working together with our neighbors in Noble on this project. You are correct. It does, the north half is Norman, the south half is Noble. They had gone after some grant funding, and they were successful in getting that on an eighty-twenty split. The total project is looking to be about a four hundred thousand dollar project, and we'll be splitting that eighty-twenty split with fifty thousand dollars from each community. There are actually more houses back there because there's a small neighborhood on the north side of the roadway that is completely within Norman. So we probably have more house rooftops than they do, but we're all going to participate in this together to get that road fixed up. It's been in rough shape for a while. In fact, the bridge structure there actually partially washed out during the rain events recently. We completed repairs on that this week to make sure that the whole road is safe and everybody to be on. Because it is just, there's no county component to that road. There's not, it doesn't abut county. So just like we would do with Indian Hills, where it's Oklahoma City and Norman, the two communities just split the cost of the repairs and the maintenance of that roadway. A lot of times, whoever there is first just does it and talks to the other one. We do an interlocal agreement to do that work. But in this case, there was actually a grant application, so we're able to get that funding.
Are there any improvements to the railroad crossing there at all?
No, we're not doing any major improvements at that. Just kind of, it's really more just a resurfacing, kind of deep patching, getting the road at least up to more usable. You know, we were referred to maybe been able to go in there and actually utilize our new conference transportation planned road sections, but in this case, because of the funding and the availability to get in there, it is a very short section of road. I believe it's just a little over a half a mile. Gets us in there and gets us able to serve those citizens from both communities in a great way.
Okay, thank you.
You may cast your vote. We got, we got it. It wouldn't come up. There you go. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number thirty, a public hearing for the proposed two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-two consolidated plan and first-year action plan for the fifty-first year Norman Community Development Block Grant Application, which includes the two thousand and twenty-five Home Program totaling one million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars, to be submitted to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. I need a motion to open the public meeting.
Motion.
Second.
A motion, second. Motion on the floor is to open the public meeting. Council members, may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to open the public hearing passes unanimously with Councilmember Ball out of the chambers.
Like Lisa Craig, grants planner.
Just a second here. There we go. Mayor, Council, Lisa Craig, CDBG Grants Manager. I want to thank you for this opportunity to come before you. Seems like that this comes more often each time. What we have tonight is our five-year consolidated plan. This requires that the city undertake a process that Tara Reynolds and I have been ongoing working on for about the last year. It requires us to evaluate various census data for the City of Norman, have consultations with multiple agencies and entities, both governmental, faith-based, private entities, to come up with a set of goals and objectives that the CDBG and home programs can accomplish over the next five years. We all understand the political climate that we're in this year, and so I'm not going to read you all two hundred pages of this. So what we did was, is we took the programs that we currently operate and literally just expanded them over five years. We expect to receive level funding this year. We're hoping for the same ongoing funding throughout the five years. It's a year-by-year thing at this point. But what the consolidated plan does, it is required by HUD, since we are an entitlement community, it identifies community needs, both community-wide as well as targeting low and moderate income citizens of Norman, and it sets our funding priorities for the programs that we do operate. So for this, HUD prescribes a template that we use, and so you go to any community that receives CDBG funds and home funds in the United States, and their document looks exactly the same. We answer the same questions. We evaluate the same sources of data. Obviously, everybody's is different, but the beauty of the CDBG program is that we rely on a citizen participation process. So this document actually reflects the ideas and the goals of the citizens of Norman that we came to through the consultations that we did, as well as meeting with the people within the neighborhoods that we work in. And we have a fifteen-member citizen advisory committee. And so what you see through this document are their voices, and their goals, and their wishes. And so we're required to look at a bunch of different, very specific things regarding to housing, the needs of special populations, non-housing community development needs primarily within the target area of infrastructure, public services, and some limited economic development. And so the goals that we have, very similar to the last five years, is to maintain an adequate supply of permanent quality affordable housing. That is probably the number one goal of everything that we do with these funds, whether it is the Housing Rehabilitation Program, helping people remain in their homes, as well as developing housing that can be to be sold or rented at affordable rates, assisting special needs populations with social service and housing needs, and continuing the commercial and residential revitalization efforts in our low-income neighborhoods, and then the ongoing efforts to reduce homelessness within our community. So this year, the funding that we're proposing, as the mayor mentioned, is level funding from last year. This is an estimate based upon the continuing resolution that Congress adopted several months ago. Each year, depending upon the amount of funding that is awarded by Congress, there's a formula. Some cities come in, some cities go out. We're expecting it to be very, very close to what we had last year, which was a little over nine hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And so with those funds, we're going to be working on decent housing, suitable living environment, and economic opportunities. Those are the three main goals that HUD has for these programs. And then with the Home Investment Partnerships Program of almost four hundred thousand dollars, we'll be working to increase the supply of affordable housing within Norman. So a lot of times, I stand up here and I talk about eighty percent median family income, and I don't always show you the numbers. So this year, the median income for Norman, Oklahoma, is sixty-two, seven for a household of four. And so what we look at, no, I'm sorry, that's just the median income, just for each household. So what we do is HUD actually breaks this down by household size. So one person, eighty percent median, is a little over fifty thousand, going up to four people, which is seventy-one, six. And those are the income limits that we use for every one of our programs, whether it's owner occupied or renter occupied. The action plan that goes along with the consolidated plan is what you usually hear me speak about each year. That is our one-year goal of telling HUD how we are going to spend the money that they provide to us. And so it has our summary of annual objectives, the citizen participation plan that I referenced, the accomplishments for each activity that we're proposing, how we're going to distribute the fund, and then the part that the mayor always likes is the novel of certifications that he has to sign when we're all done. So this year, nine forty-four, eight fourteen, one eighty-six is for admin and planning. That covers all the overhead that we have as far as the admin staff. Housing Rehabilitation has two staff members, as well as the program funds for during the rehab and the accessibility for the properties that we do. Public Services of fifteen, fifty-five thousand dollars, that's the partnership that we have with the Affordable Housing Corporation, to where we provide funding for the Housing Navigator that is working with the various Section Eight landlords to increase our supply of participation in that. to where we provide funding for the Housing Navigator that is working with the various Section Eight landlords to increase our supply of participation in that program. And then neighborhood projects and acquisition, we provide Habitat and the Affordable Housing Corporation funds to purchase properties, as well as that we have some neighborhood-specific projects that we do. The home program, again, is targeting affordable housing. There's a little bit of admin in there. And then we have a CHODO, a community housing development organization. We're required to provide fifteen percent of our funds to that entity. Norman CHODO is our CHODO, and they partner with us, along with the Affordable Housing Corporation, in the development of affordable housing. We have a, a new four-bedroom structure that we are getting ready to accept bids on. It's going to be up on Leaning Elm. That's a partnership between the city and the Affordable Housing Corporation and the CHODO. That the bids should be due by the end of the month, and we'll be coming back to you to appropriate the funding towards that. And then affordable housing development. We partner with a nonprofit developer, primarily the Affordable Housing Corporation. We do a request for proposals with each project. And Crimson Flats, you've heard about, about that project. That's, that's been ongoing. We're getting ready to sign the contracts on that. Even though it did not have any home funds in that project, it was because of these partnerships that we have worked very hard to develop over the years using home funds that that project was able to come to be. We also have some home ARP money. We'll be coming to you in the next few months to, to give your, your contract approval on that. And so the next steps for this is we will be anticipating getting our official award letters by the end of the week. And that, that will give us the right number. And at that point, we will adjust the numbers that, as I said, we're anticipating some minor adjustments. With CDBG, we will be using the housing rehab line item to make those adjustments. And with the home program, the affordable housing development line item. So once we have those word letters, we'll get the certifications over for your signature.
Thank you.
And so at this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council? Seeing none? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Did you have one? This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item only. Remarks should be directed to council only. Once public comments have concluded, council may choose to answer your questions. Madam Clark, do we have anybody signed up?
Evan?
Evan? Oh, am I, okay.
Yeah.
I kind of jumped the gun. Question, tiny houses, affordable housing, is there, kind of, is that being researched? Is there any opportunity for that to become something that you all take action on and actualize?
Okay, I'm sorry, specifically which, which?
Does tiny house?
Yes and no. It's always a loaded question. I think that with tiny houses, you have to be very, very careful as to the actual development cost of them. What we are looking at is some smaller developments of what is called single-room occupancy. They will most likely not be detached. They will be attached. And so what that allows is for a single individual to be able to occupy these units, have their own kitchen facilities, their own bathrooms. And so that, you know, a fourplex that are, that is an SRO is, is fairly economical to build. Discussing the need for one-bedrooms, smaller things with the housing authority, that is their, their highest need. When you look at the development plans that come forward, you don't see many one-bedrooms just because, especially for rental, because you can build a two-bedroom for exactly the same amount and rent it for more money. So we have been concentrating on either very small, such as SROs or one-bedrooms, or very large, such as a four-bedroom unit, trying to hit those, those gaps that, that the typical developers do not, do not go for, for financial reasons. So.
Part of the research that I've done on that is the matter of sharing walls. When you start to have individual, small units like tiny houses out there, your, your plumbing costs go up. Everything goes up because you cannot combine, there's no efficiency to it. When you combine them together in a, I'll call it an apartment style, that's obviously wrong, but.
Yeah.
An apartment-style thing, you can, you can save money and build more with the same amount of money.
Yep.
That, that would be the.
Close.
Yeah.
Well, I have a follow-up.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Is there any kind of research going into RVs as possible housing solutions?
No, there's not, because a recreational vehicle does not meet minimum housing standards. And because these are HUD funds, we have a certain standard of the construction that we have to meet.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So.
All right.
Heidi Smith?
Hello, everyone. I'm Heidi Smith. I live in Ward Five, and most of you know who I am because I talk a lot about homelessness in the city of Norman. And I want you to know that CDBG was the gateway to me talking about homelessness in the city of Norman. I first joined that committee nine years ago, and it's where I learned about compression and things and how affordable housing is related to issues of homelessness. And it is our cooperation as a city with the consolidated plan that not only brings in our CDBG funds and our home funds, so over a million dollars a year, and all the COVID money we had, but it also allows us to bring in over $600,000 for permanent support of an emergency shelter housing because we have a consolidated plan. So I would also, she will not enjoy me saying this, but Lisa Craig is a gem unlike no other. I have spent the last three years learning about HUD, and she has forgotten more than I will ever know. And the knowledge and the institutional structure that she brings to the city of Norman and that she's passing on to Tara are invaluable. And I cannot tell you how much we, as a committee, appreciate her knowledge and her expertise. And I just ask you to go forward with the consolidated plan. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a couple of people that signed up, but you didn't mark what item you wanted to speak to. Suzanne Ashmore?
Uh, she left.
And Chelsea Davis? Okay.
That was it?
Yeah.
Any final comments from council regarding any of this? Councilmember Peacock?
I would just like to second Ms. Heidi Smith's comments.
Yep.
At least Craig.
Amen. Councilmember Grant?
Yes, I'll put a third on that. And also, I'm happy to support moving this forward.
Councilmember Ball?
And Lisa does an amazing job, but I just want to thank Heidi. She gave us all a book probably six months ago, a year ago, called, uh, "Humblingness is a Housing Crisis." I believe that's the title, right? Okay. It's been a while since I read it. And, you know, and we don't agree on everything, but the work that these ladies do. Heidi up at Thunderbird Clubhouse, they, they just do so much amazing work. So, yeah, I just want to third what they said.
Councilmember Henkel?
Yeah, if we're going to go ahead and jump on the Lisa Craig is awesome train, then I'm going to go ahead and get one in there too, because she is amazing. And I've had the pleasure of working with her in my time in the city, working on the Social and Voluntary Services Commission, and Heidi too, as acting as our collaborative applicant, applicant for all the things that we do there. So thank you both so much, and really excited to vote yes on this plan for you.
I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion?
Second.
Have a motion.
Second.
All votes have been cast. Motion to close the public hearing is unanimous. The public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to authorize submission of the application to HUD.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second. The motion on the floor is to authorize submission of the application to HUD. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll need a new pen, Lisa. Thirty-one, an ordinance rezoning property located at, uh, excuse me, 1451 12th Avenue Southeast from SPUD, Simple Planned Unit Development District, to an alternate SPUD, Simple Planned Unit Development District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion?
Second.
The motion is second. Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Todd DiAmico with First American CDS, representing Tinker Federal Credit Union and the applicant of the vacant property. The right side. So we're asking this evening for your consideration on just what the mayor had mentioned. This property was originally presented as an SPUD in 2019. The vacant property to the south of the TFCU has a potential buyer. So the, the excess property south of the existing Tinker is, is being purchased, and they'd like to do something with that property. So the use in that, for that proposed section did not fall in the current SPUD. So we revamped the SPUD document itself to include indoor athletic facility. That's the major change in the SPUD. You'll see on this slide, this is the current existing zoning for the property. Obviously, they're the, the SPUD for the property in question tonight, along with the residential to the south, and it's bounded by three streets. Here again is the existing land use. You'll see, originally when we wrote the SPUD, the Tinker wasn't existing, and it is now. Here's a current aerial image of that property. You can see along the south and the southeast, the excess property there. And the existing improvements are the TFCU that's there on 12th Avenue and just south of Commerce. Here you'll see the proposed building for the indoor athletic facility and the, the site plan or the layout for the proposed use. Once this is, if you deem it approved this, this evening, there is also an application submitted for a short-form plat to separate that excess property. So this layout also reflects that. So. Any questions?
Thank you. Couple of questions. One, stormwater management, since it's currently undeveloped property as far as what would be built on, you're adding a parking lot and a proposed building, how stormwater management is going to be done on-site? And then, um, any idea what the building looks like yet? And then, are there any lights or anything that would be impacting the residential neighborhood to the south?
Yeah, Councilman Holman, I understood. The first question on the drainage. So we met with staff and met with all sides of city staff. This particular property, when designed originally, the entire property was taken into account for storm drainage out to 12th there. And that property is, is, has already been reviewed and, and determined that it has adequate engineering for that. Obviously, the proposed building and, and parking will go through the standard submittal for civil and all of that and design and, and a permit. But we did ask that same question, and the infrastructure along 12th Avenue and the stormwater, already in place, was originally designed with this piece being commercial and being developed. It sat vacant for many years before Tinker purchased it, so it's a good question. Question number two, the proposed building has specific code requirements for the type of structure it can be. And the proposed, or the, the property owner to the south has worked with the city and worked with Tinker to make sure that the aesthetically it's going to, it's going to match something, it's going to, going to fit. But that more importantly, that it matches what the city requires that to be through the permit process. I know they've had conversations about that already. So we had conversations about that. I don't have any renderings tonight of what that would be. So.
I assume complying with our commercial lighting ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the lighting, that will be taken into account as well, because all the homeowners to the south absolutely will be reviewed in, in the development process. And I will also express that to the land, the potential landowner.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman asked most of my questions. So this building wasn't exactly in the 2019 version that came forward. It's all brand-new. Um, is there, what is the landscaping going to look like here? Were there trees that are being planted? It didn't look like there were trees on the.
Yes, there, there are some right now. There are some new trees added along this plan. You'll see in some of the islands and along the, the side and the front there around the turnabout. But the landscape plan, this is a development plan for just the SPUD. The landscape plan will have to be approved through the normal process, through the civil process and the civil packet of submittal. So that'll have to meet all the Norman landscape requirements.
All right, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item only. Remarks should be directed to council only. Once public comments have concluded, council may choose to answer your questions. Madam Clark, are there any speakers? Sign up.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dunn?
Oh, okay. I'm surprised. First of all, thank you for bringing this to the east side. It's about ten years, twenty years too late for me, but it's about, it would be about a block away from where I grew up, so thank you for that. Inside, are there basketball courts? If so, are they wood?
So from what I'm told right now, this is an indoor athletic facility, and I don't have any details on the flooring, but I do know there's been talk about indoor flag football, and I've not had any conversation about basketball. That's what I know at this time.
Okay, okay.
Evan, address us, please.
Okay, sure, sure, sure. With regards to just the design, some fruit trees would be great.
That's all. All right. Regarding this item? All right. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast. Adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading as a whole.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the, the ordinance on final reading as a whole. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
There you go, sir. All right. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous, and we're already done?
Yeah.
I spent more time reading than I spoke thinking. Uh, next item on the agenda is miscellaneous. An opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Do we have anybody signed up?
We do. We'll start with Mark Daniels.
Hi, my name is Mark Daniels, 428 Laws Drive in Norman. I used to be a city employee for 23 years, and I didn't envision coming back to see you ever again. But it's been raining outside in the last few weeks. According to my records, it rained about 10 to 11 inches in the last week of April, at my house anyway. And as you all know, Robinson is washed out on between 48th and 60th, and Rock Creek was closed, and 48th Northwest was closed. But, but anyway, so all that flow comes into Boggy Creek in Timmell Flats, which goes right behind my house. And that's the pictures that I handed out there. I'm not sure what I'm asking you to do at this point, but maybe consider looking at this area for future improvements or allowing us to do something back there. It's a flood plain. As you can see in the first picture, we're in 22, I mean, the creek was up during that storm, but. see in the first picture, in 22, I mean, the creek was up during that storm, but it, it was still okay. But a few, I guess a year later, I need my glasses. These two trees fell that you see in the first picture, and that started the process of all the erosion. And it just continued to get worse. And on the last two photos are in the, in March of this year, and then just last week. And as you can see, the, the bank has eroded rather substantially outside of the 100-foot drainage easement that's back there, and into my yard to a certain extent, and into my neighbor Chelsea's yard to a much greater extent. But, you know, I'm just hoping that something can be done to help the HOA, who owns the easement. And, you know, I'm not sure what, what's the cause of this, climate change, or just the, the problem of having, you know, four to five rains in succession there that caused the, the stormwater retention ponds to fill and stay filled and overflow eventually. And additionally, the water that went down to Robinson, I have 20 seconds left, was, our area is added to the, the pond that is Arbor Lake, so that empties into the same area right above our houses. So, I just wanted to make you aware of what's going on. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Troy Carroll?
I'd like to apologize to the mayor. He warned me over something a couple of times, and I wasn't smart enough to listen real close. So, I appreciate that, and I'm sorry that I didn't listen. But I wasn't going to mention some of that stuff was going on, but we got a couple council members that's pretty proud of that. And I feel really bad that the Nutty Professor is not here to back me up, because I talked to him, and he didn't like some of my stories either. I think Stephen Ellis is that one of them. So, this homeless problem, you know, is, is driving everybody crazy over there. And when you hire those guys to, to, to come by and look, and find stuff to steal from us, that's, that's ethically, that's, that's pretty crazy. So, we caught them in our yard, they pick up stuff all over the place, and they want to put trash in our dumpsters, but they have to come in our yard to do it at $35 a day. And now you're going to get a van and drive them around? So, what I, what I liked about the Nutty Professor is he got approved for $62,000 to take care of 50 of them on Gray Street. And I wanted some of that money, because they stole my lawnmower for like 10 years. Last year, they stole my edger that I had bought from a cop. And I thought they'd steal it the first year that I had it, but they actually stole it the second year. And the problem is, is I couldn't start it, so my neighbors would have to start it for me. We have, we have some lunacy going on, and I was just wondering if anybody on this council is going to be able to manage that, because if you're going to take responsibility for what they steal and tear up, then we're okay with that. But as long as you're allowing them to do that, and then you're going to pay them to do it, that's a level of lunacy that, I don't know. I'm going to ask the Nutty Professor to do the math on that, but it's not adding up. And can anybody on this council manage that? He can, he can come by my house and talk to me and some of the neighbors if he wants, but how do you, how do you manage that? This has been going on for 10 years, so. 20 years ago, we didn't have this problem. It generated from somewhere. And I don't mind feeding people, I just don't like them stealing from me. Now, if you want to take them to your house and feed them and let them steal from you, that's okay. I just don't want them doing it at my house, and nobody in my neighborhood wants it. And now that the weather's changed, they're back at it again. So, I appreciate you guys looking, letting me talk.
Chelsea left, didn't he? Oh, did you want to speak, Chelsea?
Sure.
Okay. Your turn.
From that same area over off of Robinson.
Introduce yourself.
Name is Chelsea Davis, Ward Three.
Thanks.
Thank you. From that same area, and seeking some kind of direction or guidance from council. It's approximately 576 homes that have the watershed of Boggy Creek, all of 10 Mile Flats, Arbers, Brookhaven. All of this is flowing through the distance of me to the mayor. It's a very small area. Robinson collapsed under the weight. There's been more damage around there. Pretty soon, the lake is going to collapse. I took a kayak down it last night. There's going to be a lot of problems resulting from this excess watershed that's all being shoved through a space that's too small. It's already shown itself on that Robinson again, and it's going to continue unless there's a plan to figure out what to do with all the water. There's some of these neighborhoods that are building what's supposed to be detention ponds. They're more of a water feature for the clientele. They're not detaining anything. They're just shedding the water back into Boggy Creek. And at this point, some of the trees are failing, and once those fail, it's rapidly degenerating. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Evan?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Evan Dunn, 1400 Garfield Avenue. These are good mics. I, I come up here and I almost instinctively try to fix it, but I really don't have to. Okay, so, there's, every time I come, I have so much that I want to say, and I, I always bring too much. But, okay. So, we had some proclamations this evening. Awesome, 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 awesome. Item 25, about the solar photovoltaic set that's going on top of the hazardous waste facility. Thank you for that. I'm not going to talk about the cart before the horse, because if, if it's progress, okay. The small businesses thing, hey, farmers' market, I'm not selling there yet, but there are a lot of other people. Oh, you know, I meant to mention this a couple weeks ago. Our ladies gymnastics team won another national championship. And, gosh, KJ Kindler and her team, who are they? I got time for this. Elizabeth Blessie, Audrey Davis, Addison Fata, Danae Fletcher, Aspen Lindzner, L. Mueller, Lily Peterson, Hannah Shebel, Ava Siegfeldt, Danielle Severs, Kelsey Slade, Caitlin Smith. You talk about a group of human beings who are trying to be perfect. And I don't know what KJ is, Coach Kindler, I don't know how she motivates them. I don't know how she inspires them to become as good as they are. And I think that if we don't look at those exam, exemplars of perfection or near perfection, what do they do? They get tight, and they go, and they turn, and they spin. And once they finish, what do they do? Boom! They open up. And that is an, an example of the Uthron's principles of extremes. You compress and retract, and then you extend. You extend and you lengthen. You distribute that force of gravity. You disperse that oxygen that all of our trillions of cells need. They found the Higgs boson? Hey, there's 10,000 Higgs bosons right there. There's 10,000 Higgs fields, 10,000 Higgs fields there. Well, what happens whenever you align those physiological structures? You're aligning atomically. You're aligning your electromagnetic field. That's real, and it's invisible. We neglect that. I think that we have one of the best athletic programs in, in the country. And if it's one of the best in the country, it's one of the best in the world. AD, Joe C., he has done a phenomenal job. All that I'm trying to do is bring up the other side, the life of the body and the life of the mind. Lastly, we've got to do something about Gaza. Senators, you all send some emails. Bibi's doing it again. He is blocking off that access to aid and.